Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, March 15, 2023. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our mission statement: We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families in our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Before I move to the rest of the agenda, if you take a moment on either side of the room to enjoy the colorful artwork displayed tonight by the talented students of Central Valley, North Main, and Pine Tree. In addition, projects by the high school students featured at the recent Arts Build Confidence Showcase by the Orange County Arts Council remain on display. The digital display features elementaries and middle school artwork. I want to thank all the students and their teachers for providing that to us to enjoy tonight. Next up, approval of the revised agenda. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I have a memorial resolution for Betty Barden. Unanimously adopted by the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education at its regular meeting on Wednesday, March 15, 2023, whereas Mrs. Betty Barden was employed by the Monroe Woodbury Central School District as senior payroll clerk. Her employment with the district began March 1992, and she retired June of 2012. And whereas through her dedication to the district, Betty has touched the lives of many individuals in our district. It is hereby resolved that the Board of Education, on behalf of the entire district, extends in memoriam its appreciation and gratitude, as well as its sincere condolences to the Barden family. As the above resolution is adopted by the Board, it will become part of the official historical records of the district and will serve as a lasting memorial for all time. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Update on questions or comments. We had nothing from the last meeting, and we have no one registered for tonight. Next up, budget presentation. Ms. Hock.
Good evening. I want to thank the Board for the opportunity to present this evening, and I also want to thank our business office staff for their assistance in developing tonight's presentation, specifically Tanya Mulrad, Michael Buffamante, Patricia Wallace, and Mr. Patrick Cahill. In tonight's budget presentation, we'll take a look at staffing from the following perspectives. We'll begin by looking at district-wide FTEs, or full-time equivalent positions, that we are proposing for the 2023-2024 school year. These positions will be reviewed in two separate categories. Those included in the general fund, and those that will be funded through federal grants. We will then provide an overview of expenditures or salaries for district personnel. And finally, we'll examine the costs associated with employee benefits. We're going to begin by taking a look at district-wide FTEs, or full-time equivalent positions, that we're proposing for the 2023-24 school year. On the first slide, we break down our district personnel into 18 categories, or departments, and provide a year-to-year comparison of FTEs. You'll see that we have a proposed total of 1,124.82 FTEs for next year, which represents an overall year-to-year decrease of 4.86%. For most of these categories, you'll see that the numbers are essentially flat from one year to the next. Simply put, we have not added any new FTEs to next year's budget. The few areas that show increases are due to recoding from other departments as opposed to adding new FTEs. For example, you'll see an increased FTE in Buildings and Grounds because our two district couriers and a part-time mechanic were moved from their previous budget code in transportation to a more appropriate budget code in Buildings and Grounds. Thus, the reduction in transportation as well. The remainder of the FTE decrease in transportation constitutes three bus attendants, two bus drivers, and one mechanic position that were budgeted for but went unfilled this year. The other small increases reflect necessary changes that were made after our initial budget proposal for this school year. For example, there's an increase in health services because two RNs were added over the summer to address needs of incoming students. Do we have any questions so far? Sweet. All the positions or FTEs that we just talked about are part of our proposed general fund budget. It's important to understand that there are an additional 38.12 positions that are alternately funded through federal grants. The Title Grants and IDEA Grants are recurring grants, and they provide the district with money each year. You can see how important this funding is for our instructional staff as it provides us with salaries for 25 teachers and teaching assistants. The last two lines on this slide represent FTEs funded through ARPA, or the American Rescue Plan Act. It's important to note that this funding is not recurring and is set to expire in September of 2024. Now that we know how many employees or FTEs we have district-wide, let's take a look at how they're allocated. The graphics on this slide share the following information. First, it shows us how our human resources are allocated throughout the district. And second, it shows us what percentage of each subgroup represents our... Excuse me. What percentage each subgroup represents in our overall personnel budget. And as you would expect, the largest portion of our workforce is our instructional staff, representing 82.5% of our overall staff expenditures. We'll now look a little further into each of these subgroups and explore the year-to-year salary comparison. I want to start by focusing on the last line of this chart. You can see a proposed budget of $104,986,057. This represents an overall proposed increase of 2.46% for staff salaries. In each of these subgroups, you'll see a modest percentage increase that is reflective of employee step increases and contractual increases. For example, our CSEA employees are due for 2% raises next year in addition to their step increases. You'll notice a decrease in transportation, and that is tied into the increase for Buildings and Grounds and the three positions that were recoded from the one department to another. The reductions in transportation FTEs, as mentioned earlier, are also a contributing factor to the transportation decrease. Again, it's important to mention that those positions, although previously budgeted, were unfilled this year. Now I want to look at Safety and Security. You'll see that we have an increase in that line as well. You saw earlier that we had a reduction of two FTEs for Safety and Security. So you may be asking the question, why are we going down in positions but up in expenditures? And that's a good question. As Patrick mentioned in his presentation at our last board meeting, this number represents a reallocation away from hiring full-time safety officers and towards hiring more part-time subs, and I want to explain that. Safety officers are civil service employees. We have exhausted the list, or the eligible list of... The list of eligible candidates. We've been through everyone on the list. It's been difficult to fill those full-time positions, but we understand that there's still a need in our buildings. So we have been able to hire additional part-time employees who have more flexible schedules. The largest percentage increase on this slide is in the Other category. At 23.65%, the percentage increase is large, but the dollar amount is small, and it represents only 0.87% of our staffing expenditures. This category includes health insurance buyouts and vacation buyouts, and we need to adequately appropriate funds in this area. Do we have any questions at this point? When we think of staffing costs, we typically focus on salaries, but it's very important that we don't forget the component of employee benefits. Employee benefits, or fringe benefits, as they're often referred to, can be broken down into the following six categories. Health insurance coverage for active employees, as well as retirees, and that accounts for 55% of budget benefit expenditures, as you can see by this chart. Contributions to ERS and TRS retirement systems account for roughly another 23% of costs. 15% of the benefits budget is allocated for FICA tax, which is a payroll tax that's paid to the federal government. Employer insurance is a small percentage, at 3%, and that includes workers' comp, life insurance, and unemployment insurance. Dental and vision is pretty self-explanatory. And the last and smallest portion is other employee benefits, and that includes retiree incentives and tuition reimbursement. We're now going to look a little further into each of these categories and their year-to-year comparison. In this chart, we've outlined the expenditures for each benefit category, and the overall increase of 4.97% is largely driven by two things: increases in health insurance premiums and an increase in contributions to New York State retirement systems. As you can see, the health insurance is our largest benefit expenditure, and the cost increase of approximately 4.5% is due to an increase in premiums through the Orange Ulster Healthcare Plan, which Patrick mentioned at our last board meeting. If you look at the line for retirement systems, you see an increase of 10%. The increase in this area, unfortunately, is out of district control. The rates of contribution are dictated by New York State ERS and TRS retirement systems. And for informational purpose, the ERS includes our non-instructional employees, such as clerical, food service, bus drivers, and safety. We anticipate a 13% to 15% increase in the employer contribution rate for the next year for these employees. The good news is that the rate for TRS for our certified employees remained relatively flat.
Lori, I have a question on the retirement systems, if you don't mind. What drives the 10.02%? I know it comes from the state, but the markets are up, investment rates are up, so how is that calculated?
Patrick?
Well, it's... Allow me to jump in. It's really based on two factors. So it's the employer contribution rate, which Lori just discussed, and we're seeing an increase with the ERS rate, right? So it's 13% to 15% approximately. And it's also the payroll. So the change in the payroll also drives that. So we're anticipating, as everything does, payrolls go up, inflation has been going up. You know, so it's driving that ahead. We also have employees that receive not just a contractual increase, but a step in many cases. So it's, as Lori mentioned, 2%, but it's in some cases more than 2%. You know, so it's really those two factors that drive that higher. And it is one of those things that's entirely out of our control. And to get to your question about the employer contribution rates, for the retirement systems, I know the ERS, they have almost... It's like a smoothing effect where they take a five-year rolling average, and they look at mortality and demographics and market, you know, financial markets, how that's changing. So it often can... There can be a problem, right, in the financial markets, which isn't fully manifest yet in the employer contribution rate. And that's almost like the level. You know, they... Depending on what's happening, right? If markets are down, that rate is going to go up. And that's why we have a TRS reserve for the teacher retirement system, which is larger, the larger piece of it. And we have an ERS reserve. That acts as that level for us locally. So when the rates are high, we can use our reserves to sort of stabilize that, level that out, that fluctuation or variation.
That's exactly how I would have answered this one.
Thank you very much.
So can I just... The contribution rate depends on... Can you explain the market?
Well, the retirement systems make investments, right? So they have, in many cases, an employee contribution. So there are employees... Newer employees are, I like to say, a tier-six employee, so they have to make a contribution out of their paycheck. They might... They make a contribution. I don't even know, tier-six, maybe 6%. There are other employees, it may be a tier-four, that's the majority, which after 10 years, they no longer have to make a contribution. So those monies go to the retirement system. And then there's the employer contribution rate. So for every dollar that's earned for an ERS employee, next year we're going to send 15 cents to the ERS retirement system. They invest those monies, right? So it's like any pension fund. They have a massive amount of money which is invested by the New York State Controller. I think he's the douchery that's responsible for that. They obviously use, you know, financial consultants and other things, but they invest that. So it is impacted by the performance of the financial markets, right? And they have, I presume, a diversified portfolio. They invest in a lot of, you know, a lot of different kinds of assets. So when the market is not doing well over the course of time, and I mentioned they have this five-year rolling average, which is like a statistical smoothing mechanism, eventually, if it stays down for a long enough period of time, the value of that retirement system is going to decrease, and the rate, because the mortality is the same and the number of people retiring and all that, has not really changed substantially. But the employer contribution rate needs to go up because they need to have a certain value to meet their future obligations. And that can vary. There was a time, if you... Sorry, Lori. If you look back during the internet bubble period, the employer contribution rates were incredibly low because the market was, you know, stratospheric, you know, high. So, you know, it's a function of that to some degree.
Any other questions? I want to go over our key takeaways from the presentation. Takeaways are: We are committed to providing quality education for all students while keeping our taxpayers in mind and being fiscally responsible. Without the addition of any new FTEs, we are able to retain all current programs for the next 2023-24 school year and ensure that our students get the best education, the education that we've all come to expect at Monroe Woodbury. Thank you. Are there any more questions about the entire presentation?
I have a few, sorry. So the part-time security employees, I assume they get the same training as the full-time, so we're not really losing anything there?
Yeah, the issue with the safety really was a matter of it's a civil service position. We hire off a civil service list, and when the list no longer exists because we've hired everyone we can off of it, we then explore the option of hiring part-time staff. The training is similar, the expectations are identical. It's just a way for us to get the bodies we need, even though they don't exist on a list, and at the same time, make sure our buildings are staffed. But we also... It also allows us in a positive... You know, there is a positive to it in that people have more of a flexible schedule.
Great, thank you. And then one other question. So I think last meeting, we were told that we expected increase in students next year. Is that accurate?
Increase in, say it again.
Students next year?
No.
No? Decrease?
No, I think that was in reference to transportation. So when the transportation was talking about their contract transportation to students who go to schools that are outside of Monroe Woodbury, not talking about students that we send to other programs, but students who do not attend our schools, that was where the increase was referenced. Was not students necessarily that are attending Monroe Woodbury.
Great, thank you for the clarification. My main concern was just class size. You know, if we're staying the same amount of teachers, you know, obviously, we already overburden.
Our student enrollment is not going up, and that is actually something we are keeping a very close eye on.
So class size should stay the same or reduce?
That's true.
Right. And we saw some of that last year in our K-1 buildings. We saw smaller class sizes, about 19 or 20 students. And so one of the things that we've done, I think Ms. Hock talked about, that we are not hiring more people, but as enrollment is going down, because that is part of what's going on in the district, enrollment is going down, we're keeping to a class size. And so part of what we discussed as a cabinet is, what's the optimal class size? And we came up with sort of a chart to make sure that we keep class sizes to something that's manageable, right? So elementary schools, I think we go up to 21 or 20 students in a class.
Depending on the grade level.
Depending on the grade level, and then there's 22, 23, and, you know, we did that K-5. And then when you get into the middle school and high school, it's a little different because it really depends on the course, and so that gets a little bit more complicated. But that's something that we, as a cabinet, discussed and felt it was really important not to, as enrollment went down, not to have any employees leave, but rather take the employees and use them in other ways.
And we are, on a weekly basis, monitoring those numbers.
And just as an example, and I keep talking, I apologize, but just as an example, we've gone down rather a significant number of students at Central Valley. And so what we do is, we look at the teachers and we move them back to their building so that they can make sure that we have good numbers across the board.
Wonderful, thank you.
Is that the trend for the next school year, that we'll be down? Is there like a percentage that you can put on that at this point?
Well, we don't talk percentage. We actually talk sections. So we look at schools in number of sections, so I believe Central Valley is going down three sections.
Is that the same grade, or is it across grade levels?
It would be across three grades.
Okay, so it's not all one grade that's losing three sections?
Right.
Okay.
Right, because it depends on the total number of students that would be enrolled in the whole school, and then depending on, you know, where they fall. That's how that works.
So that's the only school that's losing?
No, Pine Tree is also losing, I believe, two sections.
Okay.
So two sections is two teachers, right?
Right.
Two classrooms.
Right.
And so we take a look, and we say, what's the number of students? And we use our... What drives the number of students in a class and the teachers? And so we move them around.
Okay.
And so basically, if you have an outgoing class that's large, but an incoming class that's much smaller, you know, then we look at, you know, like Ms. Arjuna said, the optimal number of students in a class. You know, you don't want classes of 10, right? And you certainly don't want classes of 30, so you try to, you know, look at the numbers. And part of it is, you know, we know what we know with the numbers today, but we still have kindergarten registration coming. We don't know if those are going to yield the need for more classes or less classes. We... That's the one crapshoot that we have in this. We have a really good idea of the number of first graders who are going to become second graders, and second to third. But the incoming K is always, you know, we're not entirely sure of it.
And that's one of the reasons we talked about having a demographic study more internally, and I think that's probably where it got a little confusing, a demographic study. And transportation was saying that transportation expenditures and students riding the bus is increasing, but that's specifically to students who are going to non-public schools. That's where the rise is, not necessarily within district.
So to your point in the presentation that we're not necessarily hiring any new FTEs, but does that also incorporate then, like what you guys call internally as far as like breakage, in the sense that we've had a couple already, I think, last meeting, retirees? So is that where some of that comes into play too? I mean, you can't possibly move everybody to a different building, right?
No, no.
Does that factor in if I have a retiree, we're just not replacing that individual because you may be moving somebody from another building?
So yes and no. So at the secondary level, you have... We have specific teachers, right? So you need... I'm going to say, for example, if there's a high school teacher who's retiring or a middle school teacher who's a math teacher, you have to hire a math teacher for it, right? So it's a little... We have more flexibility within the elementary buildings. But what we did do is that we had additional positions, and so we're going to look at those positions that we have sort of left over, and I don't want to say it that way, but when we look at it, and take a look at what are the needs of the students. You've heard people say that the needs of the students have changed. So taking a look at those positions and saying, where can we take those positions and utilize them in the best way possible in our K-5 buildings or K-6 buildings? Because it goes by certification. But when you talk about secondary people, we're hiring people who are seventh or eighth grade teachers or AIS teachers, yeah, we'll replace them.
Do you have a question?
I just wanted to confirm. This is kind of standard operating procedure, I would assume, right? Looking at your people coming in, determining what your resources are, and modifying and moving them as needed. This is not something new. This is something you do every year, I assume.
There have been positions traditionally that have been created that are ultimately really positive for our schools. You know, if you look at, you know, teachers who used to be classroom teachers and now are specialty area teachers at the elementary level, for example, a lot of that was because they may have gone down a section in a particular building, and we said, all right, we've got this extra person, we don't want to lose them, right? So how can we better use them, you know, as we kind of go through the standard operating procedure of looking at the needs of the district and the numbers?
Correct. We do that every year. We take a look at what we have, we take a look at the students' needs, and then we, you know, if we can reallocate a position to something that we feel is more important, we do that.
Are there any other questions? Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the second reading of the policy manual update. Are there any questions?
He needs to do the minutes first.
Oh, did I skip them? Sorry, I put a check mark next to the wrong thing. Approval of the Minutes, March 1, 2023. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second reading of the policy manual update. Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution to nominate the 2023-2024 Orange Ulster Bosse's board candidates.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We don't need to mention who they are?
I gotta pull it up. Lawrence Berger and Martha Bogart. Resolution to approve participation in... Of the Monroe Woodbury student in Munisink Valley, New York, high school trap league team. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I was informed the next item was added today, so if there are any questions, we can ask. Resolution to approve authorized signer on stack one and stack five. Are there any questions?
I didn't get a chance to see it, so I have no idea what that is.
So stack one and stack five are forms that we have to sign to get reimbursed, and it's for preschool services. So typically, the superintendent has the ability to authorize someone else to sign them. There are many, many forms, and so I've authorized Eric Ulow, who oversees elementary special education, and so he will be able to sign it.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Personnel. Ms. Hock?
I respectfully request board approval for the items listed under Personnel, 11-1 to 11-14.
Are there any questions? Motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Business and financial.
Thank you. I also respectfully request approval of the business and financial items, 12-1 through 12.4.
Any questions? Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Committees on special education and preschool education. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Report by student board representative.
So this month, the weather impacted students quite a bit. The high school was set to put on its very first blossom ball, which got canceled due to inclement weather, but will now be held on April 15th. So I hope anyone who didn't get tickets can now plan on attending and doing all of the art club and student council's hard work. I was also excited to receive the senior prom theme from one of our senior class officers, which will be Old Hollywood, and the prom is taking place on June 16th. I was set to meet with eighth graders at the middle school about their transition to the high school, as I discussed last meeting, but the two times we were scheduled and rescheduled to meet were the two snow days our district had. So hopefully this Monday, I'll be able to speak to those students. And while I couldn't attend North Main's Matilda, the musical, or Pine Tree's Willy Wonka, I heard great things from students and parents about the performances, and I wish the middle school good luck with their musical Beauty and the Beast this Friday and Saturday, and the high school good luck with their performance of Les Mis, which will take place later this month. When I visited Pine Tree, I loved seeing their excitement towards Women's History Month, and there were books lying on the shelves celebrating women's accomplishments, and all the students were eager to tell me all they had learned about Rosa Parks and Princess Diana, and their love for learning really showed through once again. And I plan on meeting with Central Valley students next Wednesday, and will contact more principals to meet with more students before I leave for Canada for the high school French classes spring break trip. And then I also wanted to quickly mention my gratitude to everyone in the community and school district who contributes to the common scholarships that Monroe Woodbury High School gives to seniors. A few weeks ago, my grade handed in their applications, and everyone worked so incredibly hard, and it was amazing to see the seniors helping each other with all their applications. I know we're all grateful for the opportunity to fund our experiences once we leave the district. And lastly, applications for next year's Board of Education student representative are open. I filmed a short promotional video today, quickly explaining what I do for the juniors who are eligible to apply, and I definitely encourage any eligible juniors to apply and to reach out through email or social media if you have any questions.
Thank you. Excellent update, as always. Report by Board of Education committees, the audit report. I don't have anything to report. We do have a meeting coming up soon. Policy?
Yeah, our meeting had to be rescheduled, and we are in the process of trying to come up with another date for our next meeting, so at this time, there's no updates.
Okay. Visitation?
Nothing new to report.
And Jamel, do you have anything on the student board representative?
No, I've received any.
Okay. All right, that's all of those. Reports by board and central office, Ms. Tarver?
I just want to thank the Buildings and Grounds and Transportation Department for the great job that they did with yesterday's snowstorm, and thank you to Ms. Hock and everybody that contributed to your very comprehensive and organized, easily digestible budget presentation. And I'm looking forward to seeing some of the musicals and plays coming up.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Hock, and thank you for the, to the grounds department again. It was a lot of snow yesterday, and I hope everybody has a great night.
I would like to extend my condolences to the Barton family and thank Ms. Hock and Mr. Cahill for the presentation. It was very understandable, thank you. And Buildings and Grounds for the extraordinary job they always do. I'd also like to mention that I did get to see Matilda and Willy Wonka, and they were both fabulous. And now I'm really looking forward to Beauty and the Beast. I'm going on Saturday, and Les Mis, I'm going next Friday, so.
Great.
Have a nice evening.
I agree, the elementary plays were wonderful. Thank you to all the staff and faculty and all the parents that put in the hard work to make those things happen. The kids are adorable and quite talented, and have a great night.
Thank you to Lori and the staff for the presentation. I appreciate it, and have a good night.
I want to thank the end of daylight savings time. And enjoy the daylight while you can. Have a good night.
Have a good night. What did he say? Have a good night.
Congratulations to boys, winter track and field team, to making the history. That's just amazing, see those boys. And also, Ms. Miller, to advancing to the next round of National Mayor Scholarship.
I too want to mention the boys indoor track team. They did some amazing things this season, state champions, also indoor, Nike Indoor National Champions. I want to mention the boys individually, Colin Gilstrap won the 3200 at the state championship, and the boys four-by-eight-hundred relay team of Colin Gilstrap, Colin Catherwood, Gavin Catherwood, and John Ursioli. I also want to congratulate our girls basketball team for winning the Section 9 title and the first round into states, and their coaches as well, Coach Powers and Coach Earl. I also want to mention our boys indoor track team, when, I know we've heard a lot of accolades about the team, but I want to mention the coaches as well. We have three coaches for that indoor team, Coach Hammer, Coach Glover, and Coach Goodwin. And between the three of them, they have a total of 75 years of coaching experience. And I just want to say congratulations to them and thank them for everything they do for our kids.
I agree. Congrats to Olivia Miller on becoming the National Mayor Scholarship finalist. I attended the Odyssey the Mine competition last weekend. Congratulations to all the teams that competed. Particularly, we had four teams that are advancing to the state championship next month, two from the high school, one from the middle school, and one from Pine Tree, so good luck to them. Matilda was great, good job North Main, sorry I wasn't able to get to Pine Tree. I will be at Beauty and the Beast this weekend and Les Mis next weekend as well, so best of luck to all of our theater students, and that's it.
There's a lot going on in the district, and that's a great thing, so I'm not going to repeat what everybody says, but it's a fun time of the year. One thing that is coming up on the 27th of March is one of our favorite nights, which is our Music Booster Scholarship interview night. And for those who participate, you just get to hang out in a room, and you see these students come in, and they're super polished and really excited to kind of talk about all that they have going on, and, you know, an opportunity to score some scholarship money, which is a great thing. Also, it's always, these meetings are great every time we have them, but they're especially good during government class season. So for all the students in the audience, it's nice to see you. We have, there's a number of former North Main kids here, so it's good to see all of you as well. But next week, or in two weeks, Dr. Hassler and I are presenting the curriculum budget. And again, similar to our last presentation, it's going to be great. So you're more than welcome to come back and watch it again, you know, watch us again. And that's all I got. Have a nice night in room.
Going to be just as quick as Ms. Hox, too.
Yes, well, one half will.
Is it there?
The elementary version will be totally quick.
Maybe yours.
I'm trimming it down. Right now, we're at two and a half hours, so we're trying to, we're trying to cut it back.
I'm sure Matt has 15 minutes of that.
You are correct.
So I'd just like to acknowledge and thank the Teachers Our People II organization and Leonard and Carol Lobriglio for their respective donations this evening to the John J. Tomasic Memorial Scholarship Fund. And I'd also like to acknowledge and thank our Buildings and Grounds and Transportation Departments for clearing the parking lots, walkways, our buses, and allowing us to get to school today. So, thank you, have a nice evening.
Thank you, have a good night.
If anyone is interested in running for the Board of Education, petitions are available in my office, so give a call or stop by. Have a good night. I just want to say thank you to Lori and Patrick and to Patricia and to Michael and to Tanya. These presentations don't go with a lot of work behind the scenes, and I just want to acknowledge the work that goes. There's many, many people that I didn't thank, but I just want everyone to know that we are working very hard to make sure the information we present is accurate, informational, and lets everyone know what we're doing and how we're doing that. So a big thank you to everyone who was a part of that. I did have the opportunity to see Matilda. Oh my goodness, these young people are unbelievable. I can't believe that that's just a three, a two-through-five building, because they were outstanding. I am looking forward to seeing Beauty and the Beast. I think it's tomorrow at 4 o'clock at the middle school, and then Les Mis Rab on Friday. So exciting times. I do want to mention one thing. The school district and our PTA have always worked collaboratively to support our students and make sure that everyone feels welcomed. One of the things that we're doing is we're developing a task force to make sure that everyone feels welcome. We called it the Inclusivity Task Force. Several of our administrators have volunteered to be a part of that. We are going to be working with our PTA, with SEPTA. We just want to make sure that we do everyone, everything that we can to make everyone feel that they're welcomed in our district and that they're a part of the fabric of who we are. So I'm excited about that task force. I believe that Karen Morales and Eric Ulow are going to co-chair it with Bernie Vega, and we have Nikki Reagan, I'm sorry, Nikki Cook, and Caitlin Caldwell, Jalissa, Lisa, all these people have volunteered to be a part of that. And I just want people to know that one of the things we want to make sure is that you all feel welcomed into our district, and our district is phenomenal. Just take a look at what we do here, and, or go to a play, or visit a building, or go to a classroom, there's lots of really, really good stuff going on, so thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. I want to thank Ms. Hock and Mr. Cahill for the budget presentation and all of the team members that go behind that.